Hello, Paulina.
Hi.
Do you think that somebody would have noticed a cow wandering around?
I might have some fumes in the woods. It went that direction. No.
That's a possible lead, all of them, so. Gotta be something there. Someone's gonna open the phone processor or somebody stole him, straight up stolen. Her.
That has to do with it.
I guess it'd be a her, right?
Yeah. Okay.
And it'll show up one of these days. Yeah, cows have a little bit of a hard time hopping over fences and stuff.
Recording in progress.
All right, the public hearing for FEMA ESA slash pick them implementation slash GZO FHOZ amendments is called to order. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the application and must provide their name and full mailing address if they wish to be notified of the decision continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code. The city zoning code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. These criteria and findings of fact are in the city's staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact or to the other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or the land use board of appeals or to seek damages in circuit court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the planning commission or city council for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing's body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance, to a time and date certain, or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony. Does any counselor need to declare conflict of interest or ex parte contact or personal bias?
No.
No.
No? Okay. Is there any challenges from the audience on our ability to make an impartial decision? I don't see any hands raised, and I don't see anyone raising their hand in this audience. So I guess we'll go to Garrett to do the staff report. Garrett?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Please let me know if you have any trouble hearing me. So I'll review the staff report, provide a little bit of history on how we got to where we are today, and review a staff report addendum that we added to the packet. So just pointing out to start off in the staff report, I want to acknowledge two errors that we're correcting. One is that it's addressed to the planning commission, but it was updated for you in almost every other way. And it also states that there wasn't testimony submitted before writing it, and there had been, there had been testimony, and I'll review that with you. So those are just two corrections I wanted to highlight and right off the bat. Okay, so this amendment is ordinance nine fifty-two. It replaces all of the text of our Gearheart zoning ordinance flood hazard overlay zone with new text. And it does not change the geographic boundary of the flood hazard overlay zone. So that's a really important distinction. The text that's being replaced is primarily, from what you already adopted a couple of months ago, is primarily contained in section three point ten point six and the pages thereafter, which starts on I think it's the forty-fifth page of the PDF packet anyway. But these amendments essentially implement what FEMA has said. Most local governments in western Oregon where there's salmon and other endangered fish occupying streams, FEMA has said that local governments have to implement these standards. And if the local governments don't implement them, that FEMA would take action to suspend our participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. And suspension of our National Flood Insurance Program membership would mean that Gearheart residents and businesses would no longer be eligible for federally subsidized flood insurance. And it would limit Gearheart, the City of Gearheart's residents eligibility for federal disaster assistance following a flood disaster. And it would also limit our ability to get grants and loans for projects in the flood plan. Okay, so FEMA said we have to do this and that there's some consequences to doing it, and we've been advised by our city attorney that there is some real risk or jeopardy of not doing it. And so we presented you with these amendments, and the amendments essentially are based originally on the Oregon Model Flood Plan Ordinance, which you adopted two months ago to bring the City of Gearheart's flood hazard overlay zone up to a basic level of compliance and conformity with with protections for human life and property in relation to flooding, right? That's what the Oregon Model Flood Plan Ordinance does and what the National Flood Insurance Program was partially designed to do. It's about protecting human life and protecting property from flooding. However, now FEMA has said that the national, the Federal Endangered Species Act will also be implemented through the National Flood Insurance Program. And so there's basically four standards that they, or areas of standards that they want local governments to implement. And they're related to vegetation, particularly trees, impervious surfaces, and how that relates to stormwater runoff. And material, the volume of material in flood plans, which relates to how much space salmon have to occupy floodplain habitat during a flood. Okay, and the fourth one is about vegetation adjacent to streams. And so basically, all of these additional new standards in section three point ten point six and its subsections are aimed at ensuring that large trees continue to grow in the floodplain, to shade the streams, and to provide a source of large wood, which is part of salmon habitat falling into streams in the future. That's, so there's going to be protections basically where if you want to cut down trees larger than six inches in diameter, you can do that, but you'll have to replace them with, with more trees when you get a floodplain permit. The second area of standards, impervious surfaces, is basically aimed at preventing impacts to water quality and excessive quantities of runoff occurring in really short periods of time. So the idea there is that they don't want there to be a net increase in hard surfaces that don't allow rainwater to infiltrate into the ground. And so everyone in the floodplain will continue to be allowed to develop dwellings or driveways or sheds or walkways or other things that are hard surfaces. But when they do that, they'll have to find a way to demonstrate that the stormwater that falls on those hard surfaces can be infiltrated into adjacent soil and vegetated areas or treated with a more intentional stormwater facility designed by an engineer and a landscape architect, for example. Or they can find ways to remove impervious surface, for example, a driveway that's no longer needed on another part of the property. Okay, so that's the second of the four areas where they're interested in protecting salmon habitat with these regulations. The third is related to floodplain habitat volume. So if you can imagine the volume of area that's above where the stream surface. Sorry, did someone speak up with a question? Okay, if you can imagine the area that's above where the stream surface typically is, just imagine what Neacoxy Creek typically looks like, there's air above the creek, right? Once every one hundred years or so, you have a one hundred year flood. And that area is then occupied by water up to the one hundred year flood elevation. And that is salmon habitat that FEMA wants to not lose that volume for salmon to occupy. Okay, so going forward, again, you will still be allowed to build in the floodplain with a floodplain development permit, but you will have to count the volume of building materials that you're bringing into the floodplain and find a way to remove an equivalent volume of material from your site or a neighboring site to maintain that volume of floodplain. And yeah, and so that's what they want, and there's, there's some guidance on how that's supposed to occur. And that's the third area of interest for FEMA. The fourth is that when a project is developed within one hundred and seventy feet of the stream bank, they'll, what the new requirement is that we have to calculate what five percent of the project area is. And then an area that's equivalent to five percent of the project area needs to be planted with native vegetation down closer to the creek, essentially. So find, you're supposed to find an area that maybe has invasive plants or that is experiencing some erosion right now, or you can make an improvement to habitat on the property, and it's supposed to be an area that's equivalent to five percent of the project area. So those are the four sort of main areas that FEMA is interested in. They do divide the floodplain into what they call the riparian buffer zone, which is, I just referenced that, an area within one hundred and seventy feet of the creek. And then if the floodplain is, goes beyond one hundred and seventy feet, they call that the area outside of the riparian buffer zone. And the mitigation requirements aren't as stringent outside of one hundred and seventy feet. But again, just to emphasize, the regulations won't prohibit removing trees, they won't prohibit development, they won't prohibit maintaining property, but they will place new burdens in terms of mitigating for the impacts that you create when you do that stuff. And city council, when we spoke, started speaking with you about this in fall of twenty twenty-four, you asked us to provide in the ordinance both what is basically a relatively clear and objective process. And that's implementing FEMA's model ordinance, so you have the model ordinance, but also to provide the option that FEMA was giving to do custom site habitat assessments. So we followed that, and applicants will have the opportunity to do a habitat assessment if they want. So that's incorporated into the ordinance. And then I would say the, the only other main sort of change from what we've talked about before that I wanted to highlight is that we've added in some additional guidance on how the city will keep track of credit for actions that FEMA would see as being positive for salmon habitat. So if you can imagine a property owner that wants to demolish a house this year, but it might be a few years before they want to build something new. We've provided ourselves and applicants with some extra guidance to make sure that we can keep track of the fact that they're removing impervious surface from the site, that they're removing built volume from the site, and we can apply that later to their project so that they're getting credit for that, and it's not, they're not getting treated as though they're building in a location where, you know, there was never development in the first place. Right? And so FEMA had indicated very briefly in their model ordinance that you could do this, but they didn't say how it was supposed to be done or how to keep track of it or anything like that. And so we've provided, you know, a paragraph's worth of guidance to, to get us started with that. Okay, so just wanted to move on to some of the testimony that we got. We've only received written testimony, we haven't, we didn't receive any spoken testimony at planning commission. And some of the main questions that we had were about that riparian buffer zone and how that works and whether it extends beyond the floodplain boundary when the floodplain boundary is less than a hundred and seventy feet from the creek. So I'm just going to pull this up here. Sorry, one moment. Okay. So I'll actually review, I'm going to go through all of these maps, and I'm about to share my screen with you. Oh, I can't share my screen. Sorry, I didn't give you guys a heads up that I was interested in doing that. Okay, well, it is in the packet, but
It should let you know, Garrett.
Okay. Okay. So property owner on the estuary wants to know if their property would be affected by the new regulations. The area in blue is the floodplain boundary. So their property boundary is this thicker orange line down here. So yeah, the floodplain barely goes into their property, but their road or path here in their building would not be affected by these regulations. Okay, they're outside of the floodplain. Same thing here. Property owner wants to know if their home would be affected by the new regulations or if the one hundred and seventy foot riparian buffer zone extends from the ordinary high watermark, which might be down here somewhere or the mean higher high water, if you go a hundred and seventy feet from there to apply the riparian buffer zone, or if it just ends at the floodplain boundary. And it, it ends at the floodplain boundary. Okay. A group of property owners on Little Beach Drive submitted comments. They were concerned, they had some broader concerns about their ability to develop and maintain properties in the Little Beach Drive area and the ability of the city or themselves to maintain the road and utilities that are buried in the road. And while most of the properties, it doesn't look like, will be affected by these regulations, there are some that would be. And they, you know, development potential would still, would still be there, but there would be new regulations that require you to mitigate for removing trees, adding impervious surfaces, and removing floodplain habitat volume. And so the regulations would be applied to, you know, home expansions or developing a new home within the areas that are dark blue. So just acknowledging, there are, you know, there are property owners in Gearheart that will be affected by the regulations. Again, an example of one hundred and seventy feet from, you know, we, we didn't determine where the ordinary high watermark is exactly on this site, but this is about a hundred and seventy feet going all the way to this dwelling on the right side of the screen. But because the floodplain itself ends at the dark blue boundary, that's where the riparian buffer zone ends. These regulations do not apply in any way whatsoever outside of the dark blue area. We had testimony in support. And let's see if there's anything else I wanted to highlight here. That was the little, yeah, this is all the actual testimony, okay. So just wanted to share that with you and take some extra care to make sure that it was, it was out there since I had said in the staff report that we hadn't received any. And several of those owners we had actually communicated with just by email and had sort of answered their questions along the way. But not all of them. Okay, so just to put this in context in one more way, and that is that the pre-implementation compliance measures are, are, are pre-implementation compliance measures. And FEMA is actually finalizing, I would expect over the next year or two, what you might call the final implementation compliance measures. And they're going to come back to all the communities in Oregon, and they're going to change what's required. And from what I can tell, it's actually going to provide some more flexibility for Gearheart and other communities to tailor these to their unique circumstances. Right now, this is a one-size-fits-all approach for a good chunk of Oregon. But there's some new pathways that they're developing that have to finish their their NEPA, their federal NEPA process, and they'll have to issue guidance. And so there'll be opportunities, I think, for communities in Oregon to work on making these more customized to our city's conditions and even more customized to the unique conditions in each part of the floodplain and along Neacoxy Creek and along the coast. So that some of our protection efforts for endangered species could be tailored and focused on areas where you get more bang for your buck and get more Endangered Species Act protection with less impact to property owners. And you could allow perhaps some more development in areas where with, with less, with less mitigation requirements in return for that. And so I think those opportunities could be coming in a few years, but this is what FEMA has said we have to do right now. And and so we're offering it to you to adopt, and I'm here to answer any questions. And I would say that if you have questions after taking testimony from the public for Chad Sweet and Chad Jacobs and I, we'd be happy to answer questions during this hearing phase. And then during the deliberations later, you know, of course, we're here and can answer questions as well at that point. But you don't have to wait until later to ask us questions after taking testimony from others, so.
Can I ask a question before we take the testimony?
Yep.
Are you ready for questions, or do you, or do you have more to say? I don't want to cut you off.
Like, yeah, so the one thing I, that's important to, you know, it's, it's a critical part of the staff report is just that we made findings in the staff report that address the basic criteria to legally adopt an amendment to our zoning ordinance. The criteria are that it has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and that there has to be a public need to do this. And so there's really nothing in our comprehensive plan that is inconsistent with doing this. When we do our, our housing forecasts, we're making sure that we have enough land for housing in the future, we already exclude floodplans from those calculations. So there's like an assumption that you won't build at all in the floodplans in those housing forecasts, for example. And there's a public need just based on the fact that FEMA has told us we have to do this and what the consequences would be of, of losing our status in the National Flood Insurance Program. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, Daniel.
So I, I've mentioned several times now, and I'm not really clear. I, I don't feel like I've gotten a real clear answer. I suspect, strongly suspect that this is not only going to impact homeowners, it also, these regulations apply to the city as well. So in the future, if we have to resurface specific way or Gearheart Lane or down on, is it G or F? I can't remember. Or if we have to repair culverts, or if we have to repair water mains in these areas, this is gonna, how is this going to impact us? What are we going to have to do in order to be able to do those? How much is that going to add to the price of whatever it is we have to do?
So we haven't done like an analysis of a scenario project, but just thinking through with you right now out loud, if you imagine resurfacing a street, if you're adding a lift or two lifts of asphalt on top of an existing surface and you're not removing the existing road surface, you are supposed to calculate that volume. There are some exemptions for certain, like public works, maintenance projects. And what we're planning on doing is like keeping a close eye on how other cities are implementing the model ordinance. Cities that are literally, they've already started implementing it, frankly. And, and we'll, we'll try to be reasonable with the way that we do this. There'll also be feedback that starts coming in from FEMA as well to some of these cities that have more floodplain permits and more work going on in the floodplain than Gearheart does. And yeah, so I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay, so I, I'm clear, I'm sorry if I misunderstood, I want to make sure I understand. So what you're saying is it sounds like it's a wait and see what's happening in other cities?
It's a wait and see what kind of feedback FEMA gives to other cities. It's, yes, we're going to keep an eye on what other cities are doing. And if we are presented with this question with an actual project next week, we're gonna we're gonna talk to other cities and literally, you know, we put our heads together. Like I, I meet with the planning directors of the City of Astoria and, and Cannon Beach, and I'm working for Warranton now. And, you know, we, we try to figure out a reasonable path forward. From what I can tell, I mean, if you, and talking with these other cities is like, there is a, a wide variety of ways that people are interpreting the model ordinance right now. And, you know, that's not totally comfortable from a planner's perspective to see that, you know, everybody's reading the same language in different ways. We're gonna, we're gonna take this and try to be reasonable to ourselves, the city, reasonable with property owners while ensuring that we're documenting what we think we need to to not put our, our flood insurance, our, our National Flood Insurance Program status at risk. I'm just scrolling through to look for the maintenance, these provisions. And we can, so there's activities that are exempt from the standards. And since, since we brought this up, let's, let's go through this briefly. So the normal maintenance of structures such as re-roofing or replacing siding. um, normal street sidewalk and road maintenance, including filling potholes. Okay, repaving is in there. I wasn't, I, I'd forgotten if, um, and that, you know, this is a a classic uh, aspect of this model ordinances. They didn't, it seems like they didn't necessarily think about it to a level of detail where they're thinking about whether or not you're adding lifts to an existing road or whether you're not doing that. Yeah, I mean, you could be adding volume of material to the floodplain, but yeah, repaving is exempt.
So we would be doing those types of repairs?
Yep, section three point ten, point six, point three uh, B.
Okay. And then likewise, a homeowner, if they're just repaving an already existing driveway, would be exempt?
Normal street sidewalk and road maintenance, um. Above grid. Sorry, I'm reading. Yeah, so they would have to get, um, if they're repaving a driveway, trying to think if we have some kind of permit for that anyway. But um, you know, the idea is like, if they're not, if they're not expanding the area of the driveway and making it wider or longer, then I don't think that we would need to require uh, mitigation for doing that. But again, I have to say, like FEMA could issue guidance next month that says that that's how we're supposed to interpret it. But no, it looks like we don't have to do that.
Well, if they issued good guidance next month, then we would certainly follow it. But right now, we're being asked to, it sounds to me like we're being asked to make a decision and then they may make us make a different decision there.
Right. No, so, well, yes, they're, they're asking you to make a decision and adopt this now. And then in a few years, they'll, they'll have different requirements, but I think mostly are going to provide you with more flexibility, but there could be some more mitigation requirements too. And then, yeah, they could change their guidance on how this is interpreted, or there's going to be cases and examples that put everyone on warning of, you know, some community that loses its status in the flood insurance program potentially. You know, the whole process from FEMA has been a bit haphazard with um, uh, two different versions of the model ordinance, um, multiple changes in deadlines. Um, you know, changes to what they called the hybrid or the, the biological assessment approach. So normally I wouldn't even expect there to be like a change in guidance, like I said, like usually that kind of thing is figured out ahead of time, but just based on my experience so far with this process, um, I just want to say that it's a possibility, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time?
I got one.
All right.
Okay, here. So, so mostly what we're talking about is the Neacoxy Waterway. What happens east of the highway? And the, and, and where lands over there?
Yeah, so floodplains east of the highway are also subject to these standards. However, we have provided um, language in the ordinance that allows you to do a biological assessment um, that where you, you could have a, a professional certify that you, that there is not, but like, there's no way that even in a, a hundred-year flood that salmon would occupy this area. Um, and this is potentially a little bit unique to Gearheart. It's language that we found that was buried pretty deep in FEMA's guidance that seems like it provides a pathway when, in situations where you really, you really shouldn't expect salmon to use the habitat or the area. That maybe you could certify that there's, there's not going to be salmon there and you shouldn't have to follow these. Now, doing that um, is, um, you know, we'll, we'll see if FEMA what they say about it after this is adopted, if other communities are doing it, but it's some, it's, it's a um, it's something we're trying to do. And, you know, flexibility that we're trying to provide here.
Okay. I'm going to move on to proponents. Are there any proponents in the audience or on screen that wish to speak? I see no hands raised. I'm looking for opponents. If you are an opponent of this hearing, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I'm going to go to people with neutral comments if you'll raise your hand. Seeing none, I'm going to move on. We're not going to have an applicant's rebuttal since we don't have anything. I'm going to move to uh, close the public hearing. Do I need a motion for that? Or can I just close it?
You can just close it.
Close. All right, let's go on. I call to order the November fifth, two thousand twenty-five city council meeting. Is there any conflict of interest from any councillors?
No.
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 No. All right. We're going to move on to approval of the minutes. And the first one is the council work session on September thirtieth.
We move to approve the minutes for the work session is to be canceled Tuesday, September thirtieth, two oh two five. I suggest one change.
Oh. Well, if we get a second, then we can go to discuss it.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? And you'd like to change something?
Yeah, um, the first page, fourth paragraph, ninth line down uh, says councillor Poffrums requested that the maps be posted and or blocked. Please change block to blocked. Not for nothing, but so far here, he's doing. I think that's what you intended, isn't it, Paulina? Block?
Right.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a correction to the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, thank you very much. Moving on, and I'll have a motion for Wednesday, October first, the regular city council meeting.
Give you a motion to approve the here, the minutes from the regular, is it around the regular? Sorry.
Public hearing and the regular meeting.
Okay, uh, for the public hearing and regular meeting of the city council, Wednesday, October first, twenty twenty-five. Second.
Okay, are there any corrections or comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, moving on. Work session for the city council on Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Can I get a motion?
I'll give you a motion to approve the minutes for the work session in the city council, Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second?
Second.
Are there any corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to executive session for the city council on Thursday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll give you a motion to approve the minutes for the executive session of the city council, Thursday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second, please.
Second.
Okay. Any corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Moving on. Planning Commission report, everyone got their package and their bundle of, um, it's quite extensive, actually. I like it. Um, so we've got that in our packet. Mayor's report, you just heard that we went through, um, what is it? Four or five meetings. That's what I've got from the board. We're going to go on to um, councillor's report. Start with you, Preston.
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Bennett? Dana?
Um, yeah, so this is a heck of a month for my family with illnesses, um, but we're all, I think, on the mend now. I did uh, attend the municipal fundamentals training through LOC. I have an LOC, small cities meeting is coming Friday. Um, had conversations with the public about the public safety building survey and did some research into chamber of commerce issues that we will discuss later in the meeting.
Okay. Sharon?
Okay, I would like to report about um, my thought process over the past several days. Um, it was brought to my attention over the weekend that uh, somebody had talked about uh, our survey and that they had taken it fifteen to twenty times. Uh, that person is not a citizen of Gearheart. Um, and a Gearheart citizen also urged people to go ahead and take it as many times as they wanted to. So I um, was extremely disheartened to hear this. Uh, we have gone into this. I have gone into this in good faith. We are trying to ask the public to weigh in on what they would like us to do and what direction they would like us to move in. Um, we have uh, put a lot of time and effort into that, not only state council, but staff. I've put a lot of time and effort into that. Um, so to have people maliciously uh, trying to subvert uh, what is an honest, what I see as an honest effort on our part uh, was extremely disconcerting to me. And, and actually, I went from being angry to being sad about it because we want and need direction from citizens in Gearheart. We're asking for it. We're asking them to be um, upfront with their uh, feedback to us and to provide us with an honest direction to go in. And this uh, is being subverted by certain people in this community uh, where we as council and staff have put our trust in Gearheart citizens to be honest about this and to give us their honest feedback. I um, it's, it really makes me sad. So uh, I will say, and I want to end this on a positive note, that there are a lot of citizens in Gearheart who will give us their honest feedback uh, and provide direction for us. And I am extremely grateful to those people. That's it.
All right.
Oh, wait. I do have a copy of uh, the posts on the Facebook group and I am submitting those copies for public record.
Okay. Paulina?
Uh, I attended the LOC, uh, one hundredth LOC annual meeting um, early in October. Uh, it was really good, uh, good networking with fellow councillors from throughout the county. Um, uh, also met with a number of vendors uh, and attended a lot of lectures. It was, it was a very good conference. Um, went on vacation, met with Chad several times on the survey development. And on a personal note, uh, had hip replacement surgery two days ago.
All right, thank you. Speedy recovery.
Thank you.
We'll move on to city officers' reports and we're going with Chief Gregory.
Sir, good evening. Um, October has shown a slowdown, thank goodness. Uh, we had a couple of vacations taken as well during October, so there was a little bit lower call volume and self-initiated activity was better heard. Uh, we did do a few good things, though. We, big news, we switched to our new CAD and, well, computer-aided dispatch and records management system. This is a county-wide effort. So as you can imagine, communication is always one of the hardest things we can do. And so we're moving to the new system. There's a lot of hiccups. Uh, the good news is, is they're easily fixed and we're working through the, the beginning stage, but everything's running really well, so we've got a few things to work on. One of that I'll bring up in new business, but other than that, things are going to be good with it. Uh, officer, sorry, Sergeant Brown is in Sub River right now. He's attending the Oregon Association Chief Police Small Agency Conference. Uh, so that's a good opportunity, him, good leadership, uh, and uh, trained for that, so that I'm, I'm happy he's there. Uh, let's see, I taught in a riot class, so uh, basically a, a drug-impaired driver horse in Scappus over the month. And next month, I'll also be doing one in Forest Grove today, so uh, we've been occupying our time with, with good, with good stuff, so any question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go on to the tire chief. Go on.
Thank you, sir. Uh, October had sixty-five calls. Uh, twenty-six were in the city, thirty-five in the district. We sent out aid four times. As you can see, the breakdown there, uh, went to Seaside for extra manpower. The trucks are firing only, uh, motor vehicle accident in front of camp, right? Yeah, I think it was on highway. We wanted to need help with, and then a seaside police asked us to come up with a drone mission over at the high school. Uh, we received aid twice. Uh, we had a, a pretty large uh, brush wilding fire at somebody's house in Sir Fines. Took up pretty much their entire property on uh, the northwest corner of their property, so Seaside and Oregon Department of Forestry came on app for the normal, so as we have in place. And then a water rescue, um, in the river between us and Seaside, but Seaside aided us on that one as well. Um, compared to last year, uh, October twenty-four to fifty-eight calls. And we are currently a hundred and twenty-eight incidents ahead of last year with those numbers. On Halloween, even though it was stormy and messy out, we had twenty trick-or-treaters come, which was a record number. Uh, the last three years we've done, we've had like three or four kids come, so whereas compared to the past, lots of, of kids that came for that. Um, our training officer position that we have open, we have three applicants for it. Um, for reference, a year ago, Cannon Beach Fire, uh, was hiring just a regular firefighter position. They had twenty-five applicants. This year, they're hiring for the same position, they only have seven applicants. Salem Fire Department is hiring for the exact same position we are for a training officer, and they only have seven. They had seven, all seven of them had to get thrown out because none of them met the uh, qualifications for the position. Um, we're going to have our assessment day on November fifteenth for our applicants. They'll go through about eight stations, ranging from scene scenarios, presentations, teaching, interview stations. Uh, chief officers from throughout the county participating, one with their mayor, our district board president, and then other, uh, local firefighters will be at those stations as well. There's no questions, that's state of mind.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you give it a lot of trick-or-treaters?
Here, twenty.
Yeah, it was pretty rainy that night.
Yeah, that's the most we've ever had.
Always, yeah.
Yes.
We, I was telling people up at the church, we got a lot of people. They were looking for you, your place.
Yeah, we had our tables up inside the base so they could come.
I tried to stop by afterwards, but you can sign. Sorry, I missed you.
Yes, we're here.
Great. Thank you, sir.
All right. Master Money?
Uh, the city has started to receive our current tax turnover for this year's um, tax, property tax collection. And overall assessed value increased by three point seven five percent, uh, which is higher than our budget of three percent, which is a good thing. We'll, we'll get a little bit more revenue in our um, budget on that line item. Uh, the increase can be attributed to new construction, improvements, and property repaisals. Um, the county is finishing up re-crea- Um the county is finishing up recreating um homes in the Gerhart area and doing repreisals tend to increase um the values of those homes, but they're, Gerhart seems developed to be in that process. Uh the city receives property tax and free funds, our general fund, our debt service um for the water treatment, general allocation bonds and the road district. Uh it's important to note that property owners in Gerhart did see a decrease in the amount of tax imposed in debt service this year due to one of our water bond um treatment bonds being paid off. So on your property tax statement, uh the particular line item under Gerhart bonds uh decreased about fifty-five percent. So because of that series of bonds being paid off, uh that line item decreased uh quite a bit. In other revenues, there were funds received for the city's portion of municipal court, which is in ten zero zero one three. Uh an annual workers' comp concession divi- dividend, we are with SAFE and SAFE every year depending upon how their ratings and their overall um portfolio goes, gives a credit, so we got a little bit of a credit there in ten zero zero two one. Uh conflagration mobilization came in for the flat fire in ten zero zero six five. So the only, I think the only thing that we're waiting for in conflict left is a few other because they help and the class of the community college or county pays us on that, so we'll be getting a small check from them. And we had the sale of a surplus fire fire vehicle in seventy-four zero zero three nine um which was sold to Cannon Beach. In the general fund, there were also quarterly tax payments received for marijuana tax and transient room tax. Uh marijuana tax was up just a tiny bit um compared to last year, which is a good thing because it has not been doing uh as strongly as we would hope and transient room tax was literally like one percent um ahead of last year, which could have just been somebody making a lake. So strong, very good, both both solid revenue sources. Uh water revenue is down in comparison to last year by eight point six percent, but total water consumption was down by five thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight units compared to last year. So we just used less water this year compared to last year. Noteworthy expenditures uh was a window replacement in ten uh ten fifty-one, city hall maintenance uh for a window that were replaced in the fire department, in the police carmen. Uh the repayment of the budgeted interfund loan reserve amount uh was in fourteen one four zero zero. And a payment for municipal court judge services in ten fifteen forty. Again, that's a, he he turns it in about every three or four months. Um so that is a a payment to our municipal judge for his professional services. And a warranted water payment in thirty thirty sixty-four. We have transitioned bank accounts. Um didn't leave banks and didn't actually leave any money, we just went unquote Columbia Bank of Astoria, unquote Bank of Astoria, back to Columbia and that went well and hopefully um they they closed out that old account, uh we're all transitioning over. Uh I wanted to talk a little bit more about um Chief Como's uh hiring process. He had mentioned that he was in the process of hiring for the city's vacant fire position. Uh based on the current employment market and the applicant pool, uh the fire department has decided to restructure their support position uh with the intent that the new hire will be able to transition into the division chief returning an operations position. So they are um interested in hiring a firefighter position that can get the qualifications and grow into the division chief uh position. Because the level of responsibility and hiring qualifications are different, uh the intent is to add another line item to the city's salary schedule. Uh this salary line uh will align with the salary structure that's already been established for the police officer line. Uh we feel like that those are similar levels of responsibility, so we have a chief, we have a sergeant and then we have the division of operations and then we'll have a police officer and we will have a firefighter line. The budget committee already approved appropriation amounts and the FTE for the fire department, so there isn't any change to any needed for any formal change on our salary schedule because they've already appropriated the money and they've already appropriated an FTE. We're just gonna simply change the title and add a new line. The impact of this change will be increased savings and personnel costs, it'll actually cost us less money because the position makes less money because they have less qualifications. And then the division chief salary line will remain the same. However, there'll be no appropriations, there'll be no FTE in that line item. Um the fire department will remain at the improved to two FTE. That's my report.
Any questions?
Do you have any idea what the three point seven five percent increase in uh property tax revenue will come out to be as far as dollars?
I'm thinking it's gonna be probably about eight thousand dollars more. By the time you take out people paying early and we'll not pay, so.
Okay, that's good.
All right. Moving on. All right, we're gonna go to the city attorney Chad Jacobs.
Good evening, mayor and council, not much to report on our end, other than uh we're continuing to work with staff on the projects that they need assistance with. I will let you know that uh the attorneys in my office have uh uniformly said really nice things about your staff and they're great to work with and so I just want to give them a compliment. Let you all know that you're, you you got really good folks working for you, so you should be very happy with that. Um also want to let you know that I had a conversation with Chad um and that, you know, to the extent that, you know, we're we're really hopeful that you guys are gonna be able to find a a full-time city attorney and we're happy to stick around as long as you need us on an interim basis, but to the extent you find a full-time attorney and and they need some backup, we're also willing to help out and stick around and and assist them that way as well, so you know, we don't want to leave you in a lurch by any stretch of the imagination. Uh same token, we're very excited that you guys may have a candidate to be looking at and so uh you know, we're here to help in any way, but um that's that's about all my report, not 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 much time going on on our end, so appreciate that and uh keep up the good work.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you, mayor and council, uh sorry Martin Fad, he couldn't make it to this meeting, but he gets scheduled for the December meeting, so he's gonna do more of a comprehensive update on public orders. He'll also be reaching out to the councilors on an intravigilable basis to get an appointment with you to bring you through the water treatment facility before then as well, he's looking forward to that. Uh the attorney interview during the executive session went well, I love it, this uh is who we interviewed and I'll be working with council on next steps. I'll be talking to you over the next week uh to determine whether it could be and how to move forward. Uh in regards to the survey, uh we've had a lot of people talk about multiple surveys uh announcements that they received. Uh and we know that there were some issues um with the way that we chose to uh get these survey notifications out to everybody, but the most important thing for us was to make sure that everybody was notified and had the opportunity. And the way that the um the databases for these addresses work, we have multiple people in the houses that are voters, so we decided to go ahead and send one to each voter, not just the one to each household. We took a little bit of grief from that, the last time when we were just sending one per household, some people were a little upset that their spouse or or other people that were living in there didn't receive one as well, but we wanted to make sure that we communicate to everybody, got as many uh surveys as possible and it seems to be working. Uh so far today, we have received about four hundred and fifty-nine surveys, you know, a little less than a week, so uh that is as of an hour ago, uh oh about two hours ago. And they just keep uh continuing to come in. I'm not reporting on any of the other information, I really haven't looked into it at this point, I'm waiting for the survey to finish. And then uh we will spend some time putting together some of the statistics and then be uh on that survey here at the end of this month, uh in a work session and then go from there. Uh benches, been working with uh five families now on the bench project and uh I have appointments uh with two of them uh early next week to go over the maps and what uh what available bench locations are. Uh then they will move forward with purchasing those benches and we'll get pads installed and begin installing those. After I get through the first five, I'll move on to the next five. Uh and then we'll continue to go down through that process, so I'll continue to update you on how that's going, so far, so good. Uh the uh in the eighty-two aquatic zone with no trespassing signs, those have been moved. Uh those no trespassing signs are now entirely on uh to the west of their break wall that they have there, uh the wetland. And uh at this point, from a zone code situation, the city of Gerhart doesn't have any other issues and the homeowner was uh lucky to work with. Uh we've had some chicken issues around town that people were pretty uh excited about and uh I think through the police department and the zone code department, we've been able to take care of most of the chicken issue. Uh we're working on fifteen other cases right at the moment for zone code violations, just kind of keeping things rolling the way they're supposed to in Gerhart, so that's keeping us fairly busy, uh but we're getting through it. Um that's why I had to report at the moment, unless there's any questions.
I have a question on code enforcement, what are the dune checks?
Uh the
Dune checks?
Dune check.
Uh I I think that's having, that's having to do with trees and people out in the dunes, making sure that things are going correctly. Um yeah, I won't be so sure after that. Uh oh, we've had, you know, a couple of reports of potential per uh moment that was going out in the dunes, but we made sure that that was permitted correctly and they were. So that's probably what that's referring to.
All right. I just was curious.
Yeah.
All right, anything else, any other questions for Chad? All right, moving along. We're gonna go to visitors and Susan Penrod from Seaside School District Superintendent is going to give us a little presentation, right?
I am.
All right, Susan.
Yeah. I can't seem to get into your wifi. Where would you like me to be?
Wherever it's easiest for you, do you want me to do that for real quick?
Something to say about Susan? Yeah, I just, I was told I needed, I mean, I sent my presentation, but I was told I didn't like it, can't project the one I sent.
Uh I don't know that I received it, uh.
Ms Christie, do you have that presentation?
She was going to share her screen so that she had control.
Okay, would you like me to get your notebook real quick?
Sure, that'd be great.
We have this today. No, we're gonna do this later.
And it's just right up there on the tab.
Thank you, chief. No problem, I can do a few things. No problems.
Hi, Justin, great to see you. Well, while that's happening, I'll just uh say thank you for having me. Um I'm Susan Penrod, this is my seventh year working for the district and my sixth year as the superintendent. So Seaside School District has uh fourteen hundred and fifty-eight students this year and a hundred and ninety-five of our students live in Gerhart. Um our district, for being a relatively small district, is very spread out. Um our district um starts kind of up uh by Colby Lake, goes all the way down through Gerhart, Seaside, Cannon Beach, goes out twenty-six, Highway fifty-eight, all the way down um to Arch Lake, so we're pretty spread out. Um we do own all of our own buses, so we run all of our own um bus routes. Um we have really focused this year um on improving our student attendance. So as soon as we get that set up, I uh I will tell you a little bit um why we have that focus. But um while that's getting set up, we are firm believers that our community, our community members um are a big part of being able to support our students and our families with attendance. You think back on um on the statement that it really takes a village to um to grow our students and our students are our future city council members and um our business owners. So um we're, I I'm excited to come and share for you um and how you can play an important part in helping our students improve their attendance. I don't know, I checked.
I I think I'm doing pretty good, is uh is the this? Do you have the file open as I check? So I just want to make sure that it's open. Seventeen easy steps. Doing great.
Only seventeen.
You know, mine's this. It's up on the screen.
And I just need to do a slideshow and we'll be good to go. There it is. All right. Thank you very much. All right, so when we begin talking about student attendance, we really need to look at the whole student. So like many of the things you do, it's all about relationships. So um when we look at at um our students, being successful students, we really think about um regular attendance, high-quality teaching and uh save and welcome schools. And if we put all of those three components together, um we have successful students. So regular attendance may mean different things to different people, but the state of Oregon, in particular the Oregon Department of Education, defines regular attendance as students who attend more than ninety percent of the days in the school year. Now that doesn't, you know, you may remember when you were in school or when your kids were in school, people always strive for perfect attendance. Well, regular attendance does not necessarily equal perfect attendance. And regular attendance to meet that ninety percent, uh students can miss up to seventeen days of school and still be considered a regular offender. So we do really encourage students to stay home when they're sick. And um and there's opportunities in there for, you know, family time and all of that. So um what we're still finding though is with that seventeen days, we're still finding a lot of students are what we call chronically absent, which is the technical term when students are missing more um um more than when they're not at school, at least ninety percent of the time. Now, how are we doing as a school district? As you can probably guess, attendance has dropped since COVID. Families got used to staying home when education was virtual. And our district, not unlike other districts in Oregon, And our district, not unlike other districts in Oregon and across the United States, has struggled to bring students back in person since COVID. So in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, when we were able to have school in person full-time, we had at least a thirty percent drop in attendance. You can see that we have improved to a little over sixty percent. Of course, we have our data from last year, which is an improvement, but not nearly where we want to be. So this year, we have really put an all effort on improving attendance. And this fall, I have been presenting to the other city councils as well as other community groups to try to get as many people involved as possible. So once again, we look at the whole child when we look at attendance. Because if we just look in isolation of a student isn't attending, we're not really seeing the whole picture. So, you know, we might think of obvious reasons of why students should come to school. But if we break it down into these three areas, we know that if a student doesn't attend regularly, they're gonna miss a lot of instruction and they're gonna have holes in their education. It's going to affect them year after year. It also affects their social development if they're, if they're not around their friends. Then that can affect their confidence in their friendships. And they can also feel isolated from their classmates. And then the last area is emotional well-being. We know that routines and structures and the stability that school can provide does a lot for a student feeling safe and successful. So what does the research say? The research says that parents are aware of the things that we just talked about. And they generally agree with the benefits of in-person learning. We learned a lot from parents during COVID and when instruction was online, that they really wanted to have their kids back in school. And that parents are generally very supportive of public education. Parents do also know when their children are missing. The disconnect is often that parents don't realize how those days are adding up. So they may say, okay, you know, my student missed a day here and there and there. But then all of a sudden fifteen days add up and the parent may be like, oh, my gosh, I didn't realize my student missed that many days. So another thing that's really important that the research shows is when those face-to-face or phone call conversations need to happen with parents and calling and saying, hey, we need to talk about improving attendance. The person that parents really want to talk to is their classroom teacher because they really trust that person. So why are students missing school? It's a lot of different reasons, but the most common ones we see in our community is often older siblings are needing to stay home to provide childcare for younger siblings. Because we have a lot of folks in our community, a lot of parents in our community who work and don't necessarily have sick days that they can take. And if they miss work, they lose income. So they often need their older children to stay home with the younger kids if the younger kids are sick or if they're not in school yet. We do sometimes see kids missing because families are taking vacations during the year, but that isn't usually a very big factor. We also have students whose parents go to work before students get up for school. And so students are required to get themselves up, get themselves ready, get themselves on the bus. And, you know, sometimes, sometimes kids aren't real great at doing that. Since COVID, we've also seen an increase in students suffering from anxiety after being home for a while, especially some younger students who grew up in their really young years, not being around a lot of people. And so having some anxiety about being around larger groups of people. One of the benefits about so much digital curriculum is that students have more access. But one of the negative parts of that is kids can do more things at home online and still be passing their classes and not be in school. So there's pluses and minuses about that. We do also have a number of high school students who have jobs and are working to support their families. And the families are relying on their older students to help support their family financially. And there's a bunch of other reasons, but these are the most common ones. So when we take all that into consideration, what is the district doing to provide levels of support? Well, I always start the year in August with a letter to families saying, we're really excited for your children to come back. These are the reasons why school is really important. These are the reasons why it's important for your children to be here regularly. Now, that works for a lot of families. But for some, we need to provide some interventions and supports. We have, we call, we provide letters, like I shared earlier. There are, often parents don't know how many days their kids are missing. So when they get letters that sees those days, often parents are like, oh, my gosh, I need to pay more attention to this. Sometimes we provide academic interventions for kids who are missing. For instance, if a student has a long-term illness, we can provide some academic interventions for that. And really just building those relationships and being able to provide interventions. And then we look at the data to see what's working and what's not with those interventions and always looking for new ways. And we often just talk to the kids and say, hey, what are your barriers to getting to school? What can we do to help? In the past, a lot of the focus on students who were chronically absent was that families were fined. And there was a truancy officer that would go out to the family. And that was really not effective. It did not help to get kids to school. So more on the relationship side is we're finding more success. So what can, what can the community do to help? Well, we have some yard signs. I'm bringing you some yard signs. And if you would like to put a yard sign in your yard or you'd like to give it to somebody else, we can provide those to you. You maybe have seen them around town and they say every day matters. And sometimes just the visual can help. In your daily conversations with people, just stressing the importance of regular attendance, whether you have a neighbor or friends. We do also have opportunities to volunteer. Are any of you volunteers in the Smart Reader Program?
Yes.
I have them. Great, great. So the Smart Reader Program is a regular program where you can come to our elementary school and read to students. The Lunch Buddy Program is a program at our middle school where you're paired up with a middle school student. And the Aspire Program is for high school students where you help a senior who is getting ready to go to college or to trade school or into a job. And you really help them through that process. Because we find that students who don't necessarily have an adult role model in their life, these kinds of activities bring them to school because they don't want to miss time with that trusted adult. The other thing we do, especially when I talk to chamber groups, is I encourage business owners who employ our high school students to weave attendance at school as well as work into their staff trainings. Because those, having good attendance at school is a direct skill into being a successful employee. So that's what I have for you today, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Give an idea of what the rate is male versus female of students who are not?
It's pretty close, but attendance is better with females. We do notice that, you know, our students who are involved in sports or clubs have better attendance because it's a requirement for them to participate.
If we're gonna hand out those signs, would it, how would we go about putting out just a quick blurb? Could you provide us with a quick blurb for the blog to explain?
I'd be happy to.
I know that we don't normally like to let other entities post on our blog, but if we were to explain that this came from the school district and were disseminated out on their behalf, could we do that so people understood what those signs mean? Because I've seen those signs and I didn't understand what they meant.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to.
And that is something that I completely support and give them a high, now that I know what it is.
They're nonprofit, yes.
Thank you.
Yep. And Everyday Matters was a campaign a number of years ago that was started by the Department of Education. And it was something that they just continued after COVID. So it was nice. They provided those signs for us and so we just kind of picked it up again.
And to follow up on, repeat that on what you said about having the adults volunteering to be there. I was a fifth-grade dare officer and I can tell you that I worked in schools that were complete. I knew all of the kids that attended my class and came to my graduations were children from gang areas. And yet those kids all attended every day that I was in class because they liked that attention. They loved that attention and it will bring them in even when they don't have necessarily parents that are in a position to support that.
I'm glad you brought up dare. When I was a fifth-grade teacher with dare, I mean, so many kids who attended specifically when the dare officer was there. And it does, that really speaks to, you know, trusted adult mentors. It makes a huge difference.
I like that terror approach versus the finally approach.
Oh, first thing I'd like to say is kudos on your cell phone policy.
That's made a huge difference.
Yeah, I imagine it did. And the other thing that I'd like to know is what happened to the vocational classes? And specifically the soft horse program that the kids used to make the soft horses and send them out to the junction yard there?
I'm not familiar with that. We do have three vocational crew technical education programs. We have a culinary program. We have a business technology program, which also encompasses our future business leaders of America. And then, and then we also have a construction program.
Well, the construction program is what I'm interested in. And they used, I mean, they used to, at your old high school, they made these soft horses, you know, by dozens. And they would take them out to the junction yard. You know, it's a lumberyard out there and the junction yard would go ahead and sell the contractor.
Yeah, I'll have to ask about that. They have moved more towards some large-scale construction. Like when we improved Broadway Field, our construction group has made all of the outbuildings for that. They have made four storage buildings. So they're moving more towards, you know, hoping someday to be able to, you know, purchase some land and make some homes. Thank you very much.
Okay. We'll go to the public communications. Anyone wishing to address the city council concerning items of interest, not on the agenda, they do so at this time. All remarks will be limited to five minutes per person. Requests to comment electronically must be submitted by email to thecityrecorder@info@cityofgearheart.com no later than four PM the day of the meeting. In-person attendees wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to the meeting. There is no one on the sign-up sheet? Is there anyone? Raise your hand on the screen. And you didn't get anything, right? Or electronic? Okay, we do have one letter asking us to dissolve Gearheart and look to get our service options at Seaside or Clatsop County. Now, we'll go to ordinance nine fifty, an ordinance vacating a portion of Emlock right-of-way. And are we going with Garrett or with you?
With Garrett.
Garrett, would you please give us a synopsis and?
Sure. So this is a second reading of the ordinance that we presented a month ago with minor modifications to reflect your direction during that hearing and during the reading. So if you recall, city council had a hearing that started in September to consider this right-of-way vacation. And continued the hearing to October first and asked staff during that continuation period to bring back a revised compensation estimate for the right-of-way that reflected the challenges that anyone would face in the future to developing there. For example, the wetlands and the position of the applicant's septic systems in relation to their existing buildings. And so staff brought back a compensation estimate. It was less than the original one. I believe it was twenty-nine thousand one hundred and forty dollars. And the applicant reasoned and made an offer suggesting that they would pay, they would pay five thousand dollars total for a deal that included them providing the city with a right of, with an access easement that's coincident with the entire area of the right-of-way the city would vacate. So the city would be vacating the right-of-way to the adjacent owners. And the adjacent owners would in turn, and the price of that would be twenty-nine thousand one hundred and forty dollars. The adjacent owners in turn and simultaneously would grant the city an access easement that prohibits development in the same area in perpetuity. And the cost to the city for that access easement would be about twenty-four thousand one hundred and forty dollars. So that there would be a net payment to the city of five thousand dollars. And city council approved that concept with the conditions that we, other conditions that we had already specified, which essentially lay out steps that the applicant needs to take before the right-of-way vacation can be recorded and finalized with Clatsop County. Those include having a final survey completed and reviewed and approved by the city. Working with the adjacent owners to the west, Gary Hanson and Jason Palmberg on how they want to structure their receipt of the right-of-way. Because the western half does have to go to those owners to the west. And it will be up to Mr. Lowenberg to coordinate that. And we'll provide, you know, some guidance. We'll write them a letter explaining what we need. But it'll be up to them to put together deed documents and surveys and all of the materials that need to be recorded. And we'll review those. And after we review those and find that they're acceptable, we would accept a payment from any combination of them for a total of five thousand dollars. And then we would allow them to go and record the right-of-way vacation with Clatsop County. So you and approving the ordinance are essentially allowing those steps to go forward. But there's a lot of work for the applicant to do to finalize this. And we're interested to the extent that it does happen, that it happens. And we're interested in the extent that it does happen, that it happens, um, relatively soon while we all have the institutional memory. Um, and while the, you know, the, the values, the value of the right of way, the value of the access easement remain, um, like applicable and, and relevant and in touch with your guidance. So we've put a one-year time limit on getting all this work done in the conditions. So your packet includes final findings that assume that this is the way that we're moving forward, um, to sign and, um, the ordinance, uh, which we're calling the second reading and, um, you know, we're here to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions for Garrett? No questions?
Mayor?
I'm sorry.
No, no problem. I just, I just wanted to clarify, um, you know, in the order and as, as Garrett was explaining, he was talking about an access easement, but as I recall, and I just looked at the minutes from your last meeting, what we were talking about was a no build easement as opposed to an access easement. And I just want to clarify, um, that, you know, we, we may want to use the term no build easement instead of access easement in the ordinance itself. So you may want to make that amendment just to clarify exactly what we, uh, agreed upon at the last meeting.
Okay.
Apologies Garrett and everyone, I didn't catch that beforehand.
Can someone give me a motion to amend? Nine fifty with the, um, wording that Chad just gave us? That's, uh,
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance nine fifty with the amendment. The correction that I use a no build clause instead of a, uh, access clause.
Would that work Chad?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye aye.
Aye.
Okay. Great, moving on. We're going to ordinance nine five two and ordinance repealing ordinance nine four seven. Um, we're gonna have Garrett read this.
I think we'll leave it to the professionals.
Garrett, if you would please.
Sure. Um, sorry, it's just gonna take me a second. I'm used to, I've gotten complacent and used to Chad reading, uh, doing this for me.
Yes, boss.
Let me pull it up. One moment, okay. Okay, ordinance nine five two and ordinance repealing ordinance nine four seven in its entirety and replacing the text of zoning ordinance section three point one zero flood hazard overlay zone to implement FEMA's ESA pick-up standards with Gearhart provisions.
Can I have a motion? To approve nine five two? I move that we approve ordinance nine five two as read. Can I get a second? I'll show you. Okay, is there any discussion?
Do we have to, uh, do we need to say repealing ordinance nine four seven in its entirety? And replacing the text of the flood hazard overlay zone with exhibit A?
Chad, you're legal. Do we need to?
No, I, I, I think as Garrett read it, it's fine.
Okay. Sorry. All right. No discussion?
Well, I, I, I have a concern.
Okay.
About adopting this ordinance right now when it doesn't seem like even FEMA is standing on solid ground and there's no clear direction. I'm worried that we're gonna create rules for ourselves or for our, for our citizens that are going to make them jump through extra hoops that are unnecessary and could be costly. Um, I, I don't imagine that getting the reports and things that are required. I don't know. I just, it seems to me that this is a little premature. I would personally like to see us hold off on making this decision and at least bring it back in, in December. Or, you know, keep, keep checking on it to see when FEMA gives us good direction, solid direction to follow.
Chad, does this put us in danger of losing our flood insurance if we put it off? Or is that some?
Yeah. So, yeah, I think Garrett explained it well during the, um, staff report previously is that there is some risk there. Um, but as Garrett mentioned, you know, typically the FEMA has a process to sort of notify you if they're going to do that. And so we would expect that it wouldn't just be a light switch where all of a sudden we would lose it, that there would be a process that would be followed. Um, this is sort of unprecedented, so we don't necessarily know exactly how this would play out. So, you know, I can't say that there's zero risk. But I, but I do think that there, um, you would not be alone in being a city that would be delaying this. There's a lot of cities who are delaying this. And so I would be surprised if FEMA came in and just automatically said, nope, everyone's losing their flood insurance. Um, but we can't guarantee that. We don't know exactly what the federal government would do. And, and, you know, certainly with this current federal government, they've taken positions on a whole lot of things that no one really expected. So I don't want to guarantee you, um, that, that, that there's zero risk. But I would say from my professional opinion, I don't think that risk is high, especially given the number of other jurisdictions who are also sort of delaying the process.
If I may, I'd just like to add that it's, um, it's one thing to not adopt it, but then also when we get floodplain development permit applications, um, and we have to make a decision on those permits. Um, and if we don't have the ordinance in effect, then we're not implementing the standards and they, I mean, I, I, I'm concerned about, um, that coming back to the city in the future and the city having to somehow make up for that. Or, uh, my organization as an employee of a, of an agency that is your consultant of, of, of our potential, uh, risk as well and issuing a permit, uh, a floodplain permit and approving it, uh, for you right now.
Yeah, and I, that's a very valid point that Garrett's making is that, you know, when we talk about losing floodplain insurance, we're talking about existing developments. And, you know, whether and to what extent this would impact a future development and not having this in place and whether they could get floodplain insurance, I think is a completely separate question. And then, you know, what happens to the extent that we are in a position where we're issuing those permits and those permits technically are not valid?
Okay. Any more discussion? I personally would like to, uh, pass this, even though it's an added burden on our citizenry. I do not want to be the person who gets the call saying we've lost the flood insurance because we didn't pass this. I'd be willing to work and go back and change what we have to in order to make FEMA's arbitrary decision-making process. So that's my feeling. Anyone else got a different feeling? A sideways feeling? I mean, you've got one who doesn't want to pass it and I want to, so I'm gonna call for a vote.
I think it's really important if we pass this thing because I personally have to have flood insurance.
Okay.
Okay, if we don't pass this, no.
It doesn't mean we're gonna lose the flood insurance. It's just we won't meet the FEMA requirements.
I think it's the one that, FEMA's the one that issues the flood insurance.
Right.
Or, or O K's.
Okay, well, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. You got that? The same? All right. Moving on, there's no old business, believe it or not, we took care of that all. But new business. Chief? Please.
You want me to read this whole? I'll leave it to the professionals. Oh my goodness.
Should I read the whole thing?
No, 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 you don't have to. I don't think so.
We're beyond delegation here. I, I'll just give a brief synopsis based off what's going on here. So as I mentioned, the county has moved to a new CAD RMS system, which is called Central Square, which we'll call from here forth. Central Square is a very technologically based, up-to-date system. We were fortunate enough, uh, last year, yes, last year to get five used free laptops. There are rugged books from the Oregon State Police. They have served us well using our prior system called Justice. Moving into Central Square, we have learned that our computers are not able to, our existing computers are not able to, uh, run Windows eleven. They only run up to Windows ten and you cannot update them to Windows eleven. This poses a problem because Central Square, while they can operate right now on Windows ten, they are no longer, as is Microsoft, pushing updates to Windows ten. So any updates, we've already ran into one and we've only had it running for a week. Any update that we receive, our computers aren't able to get it. Um, this poses the problem with the reason why we have rugged books is because these, these laptops are in and out of our vehicles. They're tough shelled, they're in the elements, believe it or not, even in those cars, if you have a laptop sitting in it, there's a lot of moisture in the air here. It's a lot of things we have to move them. They're drop proof, they have handles, they're tough, they're tough books. That spills cost. Um, and so we have to update our new computer system. Unfortunately, with, with, we were gonna have to go about it, it's asking to dip into the Vehicle Reserve Fund in order to acquire three of these laptops. The price per laptop is thirty-two hundred dollars and we need three. Um, so I'm asking the, I'm asking the council because there are some other fees that are attached to a small set of things like that for nine thousand dollars out of the, um, yeah, that was prior to us getting the quote today. I apologize for that. Uh, so nine thousand from the People Reserve Fund is what I'm requesting.
So we change this seven to a nine?
Yes, sir. Sorry, actually eleven with that, I forgot that we had, I changed it online. I forgot to. Uh, well, it's been a busy, busy couple of weeks in my head, yes.
So I, I have a question about what, what is the plan if one of these laptops is, is not operational? Are they interchangeable? You can move them from car to car? You, somebody else can use yours if one goes down and is out for repairs?
Yes, and part of the purchase is to have a full warranty on them through, we're going with Dell Rugged Books. Uh, that's what we got quoted on through iFocus. Um, and part of that is the warranty that Dell will send a person out to replace it immediately or fix the one that's there if they can't replace it. Um, and it also adds any type of damage that occurs to it. Uh, it's for three years where they, no questions asked, they just repair it or replace it immediately. A lot of similar to what we have with our body cams. We have a contract that's on, if this thing goes wrong, I make a phone call. They say, put it in this box, send it to us and we're already sending you a new one. No questions asked, so.
And am I right in thinking that the reason you can't just buy one and share it between three of you is because at any given time, three of you could all, you know, call together? Or on a call together it require?
Absolutely. And another reason for that is we also use those for other documents. So think of it as your computer, we have documents we have to do when we write warrants, arrests, things like that, stuff that we have to put in, that would over time in a pretty quick time fill a computer up where we would have enough space.
Do police car repairs come out of the Reserve Fund?
If they're costly, I would, I don't, we would have to ask for something like that, uh, but I, we have a, a maintenance, uh, budget line for incidentals and things that occur. For instance, tires, uh, air conditioner goes out, transmission goes, we have a, uh, I might afford that budget.
And these will have GPS, a GPS component where we can either track the computer if it goes missing or you, if you go missing?
Yes, and that's one of the reasons it ups the price is because they have to have two components that, that are pretty costly. One is the GPS card in it that speaks to dispatch, um, relays where we are at all times. That's number one. Number two is broadband. It has to have a broadband card in it as well. So that we can, it can talk, we use Verizon, so that it can talk to Verizon.
What's the anticipated lifespan on the base, do you know?
I'm looking, I'm shooting for three years.
The ones we have now, how long are they?
The ones we have now are five, five years is when OSP got rid of those and said, here, we're done with them.
Yeah, how long did OSP have them before that, do you know?
Five years. They were, they were five years. Well, they, they had them for five years. We only had them for a year. They're very slow. They're very obsolete, but they're, but they're free.
So we anticipate six years.
Yes. Well, yes. The technology is ever-changing and evolving, so, yeah, yeah.
Can we do anything with the old computers, like sell them or?
Well, no, because part of the contract with receiving them from OSP was to not sell them. So we can't benefit from, uh, receiving something for free from the state of Oregon and then it turn around and become a profit off of it.
So what happens to them?
Well, the plan is I've got, uh, I know I have one repurposed ideas for our camera system, uh, so that our officers can see what's going on outside the building. I'm gonna work with that, putting up a screen. I'm gonna use one of those laptops for that computer. Um, also a backup if we need it for any type of, uh, if our desktop goes down or something like that, to have one we can put there. Yes, it would run slow, but it would work in a pinch, you know, to, to get basic things done until we could get another computer in. I'll also intend on asking, uh, Chief Kommo, if he would be able to repurpose some of them as well at this, in his department.
Any other questions for the chief? I move to authorize the expenditure up to nine thousand dollars from the Police Car Reserve and to purchase three unit patrol vehicle laptops compatible with the Central Square CAD Rams system. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, chief. All right, Dana, you've got something to discuss?
Uh, yeah, as you know, I'm on Cedar and, um, the Class of Economic Development, um, resource, uh, last month, was it last month? That's been about a month now. Uh, myself and one of the representatives, uh, walked around to, uh, many of the small number of businesses in town and headed out cars and explained the resource to them. Um, I've also been doing a little bit of research and learned that we do not have an actual Chamber of Commerce in Gearhart and I'm, I'm sure that's no surprise to anybody. However, Seaside has a Chamber of Commerce that some Gearhart businesses have joined. And, um, from time to time, they have events for businesses and this, this last month, there've been a couple of events for a couple of Gearhart businesses where we have not been there. None of us knew about it. Presumably I didn't know about it until I received an email from somebody on Cedar the night before, not an official invite. I don't even know if the businesses wanted us to, to intercept them. But, um, I just got an offhand email saying, hey, oh, by the way, did you know this was happening? By the time I opened up that email, the event had already occurred and this happened twice. So, um, talking to Chad, we looked into it, um, and I thought initially the answer was perhaps the city should pay for one of us to be a member and then we could disseminate that information. But Chad actually came up with, with a better solution through contacts. The Chamber, do you want to explain?
But Chad actually came up with with a better solution through contacts that Chamber, do you want to explain?
Yes, SOPI was open to allowing our city councillors and our info account and myself. To submit our email addresses and then we will start receiving weekly newsletter. At no cost to the city at this point, what the city does in the future, whether or not it's a member of the chamber or what, we can discuss later. So far, it looks like that communication is going to. Help.
Right, and I I won't tell you who I talked to, but I believe that in other cities. Some some folks just show up at these and some folks wait to be invited because not all businesses want. Us there and that would be my approach, is I would go through ones that I was invited to. So. I appreciate you looking into that, so look forward to getting those emails. And we could have an event around two. Possibly promote our businesses, yes?
If we were to join, yes.
Okay, so do you need a consensus from us to join, do we?
At this point, there isn't anything that we needed to do.
We're not going to join right now, we're just getting the emails from them. And we'll see if it's something we want to do to have a layer.
I think there's a lot of history that's evolved here, you know, you go back thirty, thirty five years. You know, Seaside was pushing pretty hard to ask Gerhart. And make us pay for their downtown development. You know, projects and stuff like that. This is the reason why. Gerhart and Seaside. Have. Not really gotten along all that well.
It's about me, SOPI's been very helpful, she is the lady that is the new director for the Seaside Chamber of Commerce and she's very open to it. Many, I think there's more than a few of our businesses here locally that belong to the Seaside Chamber, which is typical, many businesses belong to multiple chambers to give them these types of. Opportunities. So I think we should be receiving that, I sent off a last week's. Announcement to you as well, so you should receive that.
I mean, yeah, that would be part of the consideration, it's it's Seaside is not claiming to be a Gerhart Chamber of Commerce and if we are going to join their Chamber of Commerce. What about the warranty, a story, because perhaps some of our businesses have chosen to join that one instead, so. There could be political implications of joining one or not the other.
Right. Okay, well, right now, we're just gonna put it on hold and. I'm ready to move. Any council concerns, I'll start with you, Preston. I don't have any. Okay.
Yeah, I would just like to say, you know, five people, five people sitting here, the one up on the TV. We can make the decision to go to a bond on on any path forward immediately without requesting input for the public safety to link. We're trying to serve the public opinion and we've included options in the survey that have been out that I don't necessarily feel would be our best, but I'm open to. Public input. There's no upside to messing with the survey to prove it can be compromised, it's just disrespectful. Shortly demanding social security numbers for online submissions or requiring people to come in and show ID, which I am not willing to do. There will always be a margin of error, no matter what survey format we choose, whether it be change.org or Survey Monkey or whatever. And if people want to to mess with the survey, they're always going to find a way. What I invite people to, what I invite folks to do is to participate and take advantage of this opportunity to help guide us in our decisions. My hope is that the responses will be honest and respectful of the voices of others in Gerhart and. People will not make attempts to negate, which is essentially what you're doing when you submit more than one response. You're negating the voices of others in Gerhart and if you're complaining that we don't listen to you and that we don't do what you want to do, well, here's your opportunity. Don't undermine it and that's all I have to say.
Okay. Sharon? All right.
I'm just gonna say I agree with everything that Dana and Sharon both said about the survey. I have no other concerns.
Okay. My concern is that we still need fifteen hundred more. Surveys turned in, please, if you haven't turned one in. Just one, but please turn it in, because. We are gonna make a decision, we are gonna base it on what we get out of the survey. And we are gonna move forward with something in mind. Anyway. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll give you a motion to adjourn.
So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Passes?